Half Moon Township Board of Supervisors, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. This evening's meeting is being recorded live on the CNET YouTube channel. You may also view it locally on the www.cnetone.org. Township is asking for residents' email addresses for important updates and notices. You want to sign up at www-halfmoon township.us. Click on the Contact Us button and on the homepage. And also volunteers are needed for various positions within the township. Please contact Amy Smith if you have any questions. The board had three executive sessions to discuss personnel. One on May 5th, one on May 9th, and one on May 10th. We'll move on to citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments? Anybody would like to comment?
Mr. Chair, I think we do need to add that we made no decisions during those executive sessions.
Well, yeah, that... We don't make decisions during executive sessions, but... Yeah. Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Citizens' comments. Seeing none. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. Is Hys and Kim here? She on? Okay.
Then I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Moving second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion approved. Agenda stands. Subdivision land development plans or conditional uses in public hearings. Do we have any subdivision plans tonight?
Not for this meeting.
No, nobody's brought anything in? Okay, good.
Well, we were granted a few extensions. Do we have any, like, update on...
No, we will be on the next board meeting.
I just saw Corey Relk's review of the...
I couldn't remember why we pushed off the... Or accepted the extensions, but that's fine.
For the last one?
Yeah.
Which one?
Well, we had a couple.
Yeah.
Either, I was asking about. Do we have any updates necessary?
Like I said, I just got Corey's review on the Maloney subdivision, but I don't think anybody's had time to review it in the planning commission's meeting next week. So they'll have an opportunity to go over it. Okay. Approval of the minutes of April 28, 2022 here. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Ron made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Patty seconded. Is there any discussion by the board? Questions, comments, spelling, whatever. Hearing none. I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Genuine. Consent agenda. It's to approve the payment of bills for 4/23/2022 through 05/06/2022 from the following funds. General fund in the amount of $62,013.94. Open space preservation fund in the amount of $231 even. And also to recognize May is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move. I'll second.
Okay. Bob moved, Ron seconded. Any questions by the board? Hearing none. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Work session topics. Port Matilda Fire Company by John Witherite and Bob Strauss. Unfortunately, I've just been informed Mr. Witherite could not make it tonight. So, Mr. Strauss, you're on for what you got.
Yeah. I just wanted to speak to some things as it goes. Familiar faces here know that Port Matilda Fire Company is in kind of dire straits. They have been for really decades, but no one ever wanted to admit it and really take on the challenge of properly funding the fire department. They've always operated with enough of a budget to have an operational budget, which is around $100,000 a year. That covers their yearly expenses, small capital purchases, very small capital purchases and the like. They've never had a capital budget. John sat down and did a lot of math and went through a lot of the equipment, figured out expiration, for lack of better terms, expiration dates on the different pieces of equipment, some of which are federally and state mandated because they're safety equipment. And he did a nice spreadsheet breakdown of when things should be replaced. Anyway, long story short, they currently need approximately $85,000 to catch up and just get current with the capital budget. Previously, they did a lot of their capital purchases via fundraising. Fundraising can be very inconsistent. They do a great job of getting as much money as they can, but it still falls vastly short of how much they really need. I think it averages about $75,000 a year. They, in realistic terms, need a capital budget of almost $150,000 a year. I personally, I just want to throw this out there. We don't have to debate it tonight, you know, and a lot of people are probably going to disagree with me, but I just want people to hear it so they can think about it. It's two things need to happen. One, I think we need to pay our portion of that $85,000 that would catch them up, which would be 34% of it, which equates to about $28,000. These are kind of fluid numbers. I don't have exacts. And I propose that we would pay that out of our American Rescue Plan Act funds. That would fix them now, or at least our part of fixing them now. But it would also give me leverage, I say me, us, to go to the other municipalities that make up the Bald Eagle Cog, who are the ones who fund the Port Matilda Fire Department. And I could lobby them as saying, "Half Moon has already stepped up, and we've done our part, and now we need you folks to do your part." That's twofold. One is because we need them to try and put up the same, by percentage, amount that they would owe. And two, to ask them to raise taxes for the fire department. And even our own township, we should raise our fire tax from 1.7 to 2 mils. Now, whether that means an additional tax to the residents or whether that means next year we rework the budget and make that tax 2 mils rather than the 1.7 and take it from another line item or however it happens. But John has told me that if every municipality in the coverage area of theirs paid at 2 mils to the fire department, they would be fully funded operationally and of capital. And if we were to do all those things just on our standpoint, again, that would give us leverage to go to the other municipalities to say, "Now it's your turn to step up." And it's not a guarantee that it would work, but at least, again, we would be doing the right thing and doing our part. So, as far as tax millage, I think everybody should understand how millage works because that's a big part of this. What you need to do is figure out the assessed value of your home. If your home is currently a $400,000 home, according to your real estate agent friend, it's not really worth $400,000 in the eyes of the township. It goes by assessed value. A good place to find assessed value is actually at zillow.com. You can punch your address in, and it'll take you to a listing for your home. And it'll have all kinds of financial information about your home that you might actually be alarmed that it's even there on the internet. But it was a little bit of an eye-opener for me, but it's nothing that's private. But anyway, if you sift through it, you look for assessed value, and it'll have a number. Just as an example, I'll use my home. I purchased my home 13 years ago for $185,000. At the time, because it'll give you a history of all the years going back, I don't even know how far. At the time, my assessed value was $61,215. It is currently $61,215. So it has nothing to do with the actual market value of your home. So you figure out your assessed value. You then divide that by 1,000, and then you take that number and you multiply it by whatever millage you're talking about. So, using my example of my home's assessed value, at $61,215 of assessed value, at 1.7 mils, I personally, out of my taxes, pay to the fire department $104.07 a month. If we raised taxes on everyone, again, just using this as an example, to 2 mils, that would only raise my individual household tax by $18.36 a year. Personally, I'm willing to part with $18.36 a year if it means funding my fire department and making sure they have all the equipment they need to be safe and save lives and save properties. So... But, anyway, that's what I have. And that's kind of in a nutshell what John would have told you as well. So, I hope... I hope there aren't a lot of questions because John's the guy you want to ask. But, anyway, that's what I have. So...
I would like to comment on that?
Sure.
Okay, I attended a meeting a couple of weeks ago with Bob at the Port Matilda Fire Company. And they did, to John Witherite's credit, he did put together a budget. The current budget, what he's estimating between operating and capital, a total of $250,000 a year. Operating and capital combined. So, what I did was, and I feel differently than Bob about this, I'll just point that out. I took the... I got some information on the number of parcels in each of the townships and included, and Port Matilda Borough. And I... And I'll just get down here. Let's see here. There's 1165 in Half Moon Township, 517 in Worth, 797 in Houston. Taylor Township is 591. Port Matilda Borough has 328. And that totals 3,398 parcels. Now, that's not all... That's not necessarily inhabited parcels. That's... That number's slightly less. But just using that number as a ballpark. When you divide 3,398 parcels into 250,000 a year, you come up with $73.57 per parcel. And my point is that everybody's house, when it comes to a fire, everybody's house is equal. Everybody has the same responsibility to protect their home. Doesn't matter if it's a million-dollar house or a $50,000 house. You have... Everybody has homeowner's insurance, at least anybody that's cautious or careful has an insurance policy on their home. Insurance is based on having a fire company, a viable fire company. That affects everybody in every municipality, not just Half Moon Township. The point of it is, if we... If Port Matilda Fire Company, or if we don't have fire coverage, let's say, in general, whether it's Port Matilda or some other fire company, Warriors Mark, Alpha, whoever, that would affect your insurance rates. My point is that this is equally important for every homeowner. It's not just an issue for Half Moon Township. So, that's if you take the $250,000 budget and treat that as, let's say, income. Now, if you subtract private fundraising, which is, which on average the past five years, according to the numbers that I got, they raised $365,000 in five years. If you divide that, it averages out to about $72,000 a year. I think that number needs to be included in the figures when you're looking at the amount that has to be paid by each homeowner. And if you do that math, instead of it being 73.57 per parcel, it's 55.33 per parcel. The point is that all the money that comes into the fire company is important, and it needs to be counted. My point is that if you look at the actual amount of money given by each of the municipalities, we give a disproportionate amount of money to the fire company. We give the lion's share of the money. The other point I want to make when it comes to assessed values. Assessed values with Port Matilda, Worth, Houston, and Taylor is 1/3, about 1/3, the assessed value in Half Moon Township on average. So, when we talk about millage and talk about 2 mils, 2 mils on this side of the ridge means a lot more than 2 mils on that side of the ridge. So I'm just pointing this stuff out. My point is that every homeowner has an equal responsibility to support their fire company, equal in terms of dollars. And it's not a lot of money per household. There's two ways to raise it, of course. One's through private donations, private memberships. The other one's through taxation. And, you know, one is... And I can't even call it voluntary, really, because it's something that every homeowner has to have. But we need to treat it equally. We need to be treated equally across the board. And that's my point. An increase in millage is, in my mind, is not even in the picture. We are already giving the lion's share of the money that they receive, a disproportionate amount, in my opinion, even based on the calculations per unit. So, I don't see... And I think, giving them more money from Half Moon Township, I'm not sure that's going to work because I think people in these other municipalities view that as, "The more we give, the less they have to give." And I think that's a general attitude. That's at least what I'm hearing from talking to people. But I just wanted to point out that it's not something that... It's not based on your income. Everybody that owns a home has an equal responsibility to protect that home. Doesn't matter how much it's worth. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And I did look at his figures, and I think they did a good job of putting together their budget. I think that there is different ways of looking at how to fund that budget. But I think when it comes to fire protection for your home, it's of equal importance across the board for every homeowner. And that's just... That's all I wanted to say.
Ron, in Bob's example, the amount was $18. In your example, it'd be 55 or 73 each.
Well, no, that's not an increase. That is a total per household. And some of the municipalities are not paying their share now to the fire company. And that's not... Their financial... Their overall financial problem, this is my point. Their overall financial problem is not our problem. We will give them 87... Correct me if I'm wrong, Brett, but we will be giving them $87,000 this year.
By the end of the year, yes.
Right. That's 1/3 of their budget. 1/3 of the entire budget. And we have five municipalities involved. It's pretty simple. I accept their budget. I think they're accurate. I think that's what they need. I'm not arguing their budget at all, not one bit.
But I think if I heard correctly, if everybody does the... If the other ones do the 2 mils, then we would be good.
I don't know that that's the case.
If they would.
Yes, they would.
But they definitely need to increase their contribution.
The reason why we pay so much more is, one, we have a much larger population than all the other municipalities. In fact, I think, don't hold me to this, but I'm pretty sure we have a larger population in Half Moon Township than all the other municipalities combined.
No, we don't, actually.
Okay. Forgive me, I was wrong. But we do have a much larger population than any of the individuals. And we also have higher property values. And that's generally the way taxation works, is everybody pays their own percentage. So no one is getting an undue hardship. Because if you can't afford to pay a very big... Or if you... How do I want to put this? If you're paying a small amount as your percentage, the odds are it's because your property's not valued very much or doesn't have a very high assessed value, and the odds are that those folks probably don't have a very large income either. So the idea is you tax people by percentage of what their... What is being taxed is value, so everyone pays evenly. I understand, Ron, that you're concerned that we pay so much. But, again, they're our fire department. And if we... If something's not done, they're going to dissolve.
They're not our only fire department, though, Bob. That's my point.
Yeah. But there are closest... There are closest.
Alpha responds as well.
And if Port Matilda Fire Department dissolves, everyone's homeowner's insurance is going to go up a lot more than the amount that it would cost to fully fund the fire department.
I agree, but that includes all of us. All the townships, all the municipalities. We are all equally important
Yes.
when it comes to your house burning down. And that's my point.
Okay, so...
If we were to pay our share, disproportionately our share, per parcel, per parcel, and we have more parcels than any other township, okay? That would come out to $85,700 if we don't include private fundraising. If we include private fundraising, it comes out to be $64,455.
Okay, well...
And we'll pay 87 this year.
I'd like to pair off and kind of go to the right for a moment since you touched on the fundraising part. Part of my proposal to fully fund the fire department via taxes is because we ask a lot of firefighters. We don't only ask them to run into burning buildings for free. We ask them to spend hours upon hours every week training. These are generally young guys who also have careers and families. And we ask a lot of these folks. So then to turn around and ask them to continuously fundraise for themselves, I think is... It's asking a lot. Now, I know we can get some community support for fundraising, but, I mean, we can... If John was here, he'd completely agree with me on this, that the community support waxes and wanes. You'll have a good year, or you'll have a bad year. You'll have a year where you've got so many people volunteering to help you fundraise. It's... You don't know what to do with them all. And then a year or two later, you can't get anybody out to fundraise. Right now, they're not having their carnival next year or this summer because of the strain it puts on the fire department members. They said the trade-off for the amount of money it ends up raising just isn't worth it. So that's why I would support fully funding the fire department with taxes. And so also, as eventually the community grows and the tax base grows, then that would also increase the amount that the fire department gets along with that. So, as time passes, the fire department gets a raise with every shovel that goes in the ground to build a new house. Now, Ron's point, that would be the same with a flat tax. But again, I worry about a flat tax because a flat tax, asking us to pay, let's say, $100 a year for our fire department, and then asking someone who lives over the mountain in a home that they've had for generations and they don't have a lot, asking them to pay $100 a year for that same fire coverage is... It's an undue burden. So... But anyway. I've said everything I need to say about it tonight.
I just want to say, and I'll stop after this, but what I want to say is $75 a year per parcel, per household, is not a whole lot of money. Okay? People... I think people spend money like that kind of money without even thinking about it and can't even recall what they spent it on. And I don't understand why our solution to every problem has to be a tax. I don't agree with that. And if they let people in, if Port Matilda Fire Company lets people in to volunteer... I've offered my own services, formed committees, and do it annually and every year. Right? Go around and get the membership and get the money. You know, collect the money from the people on their behalf. They don't have to do it. There are people in these communities that would help out. But, you know, I volunteered myself, and I'm still waiting for a response to my application, a formal application. So, you know, I'm just... I just think that there are other ways of doing things without it having... Maybe we have to have some tax, but I don't think that's a solution to every problem. And their financial issue, I believe, is not our issue. I'll just leave it at that.
Well, I was going to just say, anybody else on the board like to comment before we go to the audience? Okay.
What happens if we lose our fire department because they don't have the money to do what they need to do? Who's going to come to my house when it burns down?
Probably Warriors Mark.
We would have to go into a better agreement with Warriors Mark and/or Alpha Fire Department from Inside State College. It would be, obviously, a longer response time, which is why the homeowner's insurance rates would increase. I haven't done the research on how much it would increase, but I would assume it would increase quite a bit. You know, if you don't have fire coverage, that makes insurance companies worried because we also don't have fire hydrants or cisterns that work. And, you know, we need Port Matilda Fire Department.
We certainly... I don't want to lose the fire company. I mean, I'll support that.
But how are you going to get the other townships to contribute?
Well, that's a good question.
Isn't that... Where's the solution to it? How do we do that?
We're certainly going to have to meet with the fire company and the other municipalities. We're just... Bob has done a lot of research, and Ron has done a lot of research. And we're just kind of trying to see what's going on. We've been going through this for, what, Mr. Pressler, 25 years?
2005.
Since 2005. So, I mean, it crops up. You know, we're going to get a solution. It's just going to be a matter of getting all the parties together to talk about it. And we certainly, you know, need to do that. You had your hand up, Pam.
Do we contribute money to the other two fire departments?
Not Alpha currently. We do Warriors Mark. It's a smaller amount because there are coverage to the far west side of the township.
The western third of the township is Warriors Mark's primary area.
Which has far fewer homes. It's all farmland. I mean...
How much are we contributing to them? What's the total?
I have to ask our answer man in the back. And I don't mean to put you on the spot. You may not have it.
Off the top of my head, I'm not 100% sure. I can tell you, as far as a millage rate goes, Port Matilda's actual agreement says .595, while Warriors Mark says .255. So, about half.
This year, we're going to give them $40,400.
Yep, there you go.
Yes, sir.
Just listening to the conversation going back and forth, and one of the things that came out of my experience is from time to time, they review the funding formula at the cog for various items. Last year, we looked at the usage formulas for the library and the active adult center. And that sort of seemed to be a point I thought that Ron was making. And I was wondering when's the last time that was hooked up.
That's something I'd have to bring up with the Bald Eagle Cog, but thanks, Joe. I appreciate that.
I'm sorry, you are?
Joe Vigilance and Reginald.
Oh, Joe, okay. I don't think we ever met, actually.
I think we've met once or twice, but I'm going to call you later because you're too long.
Now, you know that currently... I'm sorry. Currently, a few of the municipalities actually don't even have a contractual agreement. It's all, "We promised to pay." And I brought that up in a meeting a month or so ago in one of the Bald Eagle Cog meetings about going under contract. So there is no question. So there's... And there's never been a point where any of the municipalities ever underpaid what their obligation was. But there is no standing agreement. That's a legally binding agreement. So, who's to say? Some future board would say, "Well, it was a tough year. We need to buy a new front-end loader or whatever. And sorry, Port Matilda Fire Company, we're just not going to give you all your money." You know? Having a contract would prevent that. Now, that was received poorly by the representatives of the other municipalities. So I don't know where that's going, but that's a conversation that needs to be had. There... I've had these conversations with those folks for a couple of months now in the meetings about them contributing more to the Port Matilda Fire Department. And it's not, again, not being received really well, but I'm going to keep at it because I think it's worth it for these guys, so...
You, sir, in the back.
I just have a couple of comments. I think the funds that we have from COVID...
The ARPA, yeah.
A great source to help them get along. I'm really opposed to an increase in the amount of tax that we're already paying into a fire safety fund. Is that correct?
Yes.
1.43, you're talking 1.2. I don't think we can turn at every issue in the township and say, "Let's throw a tax out there." We did that for open preservation 10 or 15 years ago, and where's the... We did that for open preservation ten or fifteen years ago, and where's that going? To do it for fire and safety, the caution, the concern I have is that Center County hasn't raised taxes in ten years. And it's inevitable that a reassessment and a tax increase is coming from Center County. Which only increases the mileage and excess value on our homes, which would ultimately increase the cost of taxation on fire. With the budget we're carrying in Hat Moon Township, some extra money thrown at us from the government and some. Is there other ways other than just say, let's raise taxes?
Well, again.
That's an easy solution, but I don't know if that is the best solution.
Well, I, I wasn't necessarily blanketly proposing raising taxes on the residents. My, what I said, that could be an option, but, uh, it could very well be, be next year at budget, or this October during our budgeting. That we shuffle some things around, decide what, what we, our priorities are, and then raise the. Um, amount of that fire tax, that dedicated fire tax, yes, but taking the additional funds from another line item. So we wouldn't be raising taxes on the residents, what we would be doing is kind of just shuffling around the money that we're already getting.
I mean, we're paying, we're paying a good proportion, Hat Moon Township is supporting the fire companies, and it's important too. I don't disagree with all of that, but I, I, just to start increasing tax rates. I mean, it's gonna be a compounding thing as we go down the line, and every issue, a new municipal building, or what, whatever the case may be. We just can't pop everybody for more taxes.
Sure.
Now, the appeal envelope that Port Matilda Fire Company sends out. I don't know what their success rate is, a couple of meetings ago, they were talking about it, it generates money. But it's not as successful as it should be. We have no problem in this township grouping together forty people to talk about the issues. And we've had meetings packed with people to get things done, maybe a creative solution is to go into the households of sent, of Hat Moon Township. The residents, the three thousand houses that are here, that are working people, or maybe asking them to make sure they're filling out their envelope. To support Port Matilda, maybe some of the things we can do, and, and as Mr. Piper said. It's been going on since two thousand and five, and it will continue to go on.
I'm sure it will.
A tax solution, you know, nips that and, but then I think it just continues to be an alternative source for revenue. It's just tax, tax, tax.
Sure, and let me step over to Mr. Pressler right now, cause I know he has intimate knowledge of the last time people stepped forward in the township.
I've heard, I believe Pressler proposed, if you don't know this, I've heard all these arguments back in two thousand. Four and five, the fire company was three days from being sure sold, the bank in Pittsburgh. Was foreclosing on them, you can write these figures down, three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in debt. That day, three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in debt. We took over their finances, took their keys, their banks, stock, all that stuff. When we left, seven years later, there were a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in the black.
Who's we?
Those are actual figures, we organized a, a committee to do that, and I can tell you. Every comment you've had, I've heard, and I've heard about taxation and. In addition to that, money we give them, we bought them three newer trucks in that same timeframe. So, the problem is not taxation, the problem is management. You go, you're gonna have to manage your way out of this, don't tax your way out of it because that won't work. What I did, and I organized a committee, I don't know how much you want me to talk about.
You can talk about, cause you have direct firsthand knowledge and save. I know, and you, and you guys put together a wonderful plan and, and brought them back from the brink of extinction, so.
I was on your committee.
We started a thing, Save the Fire Company at the Port Matilda Bank, I asked them. I wanna start an account here, all the donations that come in, donations now. If we don't get enough, I had to have sixty thousand dollars to pay that bank in Pittsburgh in two weeks. He said, I'll give you two weeks, please, I said, I can't do anything in two weeks, how about a month? He said, you have a plan, I said, yes, he said, I'll give you a month. In a month, I paid that sixty thousand dollars off through donations, nothing on taxation, it was all donations. For property owners, set up an account there, the TV crew was at our place every week. And Judy says, you're gonna have to have a different shirt on because they're taking pictures of you, well, I did. Lost my train of thought there for a minute, but. I got as high as a thousand dollars per person from different people, some people only give me ten dollars. I set that account up at the bank, the first day, we had thirty-seven dollars donated, I said, that's a long ways from sixty thousand. Second day, it jumped over three hundred dollars, in two weeks, it went over fifty thousand dollars. And I was, I'm not an accountant, I did come up with a plan on how to do it, and. That takes some time to explain that all to you, you're close, but you're not a we-o yet, how to do all that. Fundraising, we tasked the Port Matilda Fire Company to fundraise about five thousand dollars a year. And most of that went back into their uniforms and personal items that they need to protect themselves. The rest of it, we funded, yes, they didn't wanna fundraise, cause it takes their time away from their family. And I agree wholeheartedly, so I didn't bear fundraising on them too drastic. And, Warriors Mark at the time was paying eighteen hundred dollars for fire protection. When we left, and I left that whole situation, when somebody lies to me and steals from me. I'm not gonna associate with you very little, and that's what happened to the Port Matilda Fire Company. And that was his downfall, yes, it can be done, and yes, you need a fire company, if you don't. And you wanna build a house or buy a house, you can't get a mortgage if that, there's no fire company coverage in your area. The office can cover that part, Warriors Mark can cover that Loveville Road, but there's a place right here where you need a fire company. And Port Matilda Fire Company is owned and constituted by Port Matilda Borough, and so they're the. Owning factors in all of this, and they'll tell you that. I said, not thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, I, I just wanted to say one quick thing, and. I, I have heard the stories about Port Matilda Fire Company past and some of the shenanigans that went on. It's a whole new crop of guys over there, it's, it's some good people, so, um, just. Just wanted to touch on that, it's, it's under new management, so.
Yeah, it changes.
Yeah.
Is that the same management from two thousand nine, two thousand ten?
No, a couple of years.
So, Susan and Kim.
Go ahead.
Um, so that was back in two thousand and five, right? How often do we need to upgrade our truck?
Uh, well, yeah, that's actually another conversation, um, one of the trucks, it was a truck that was actually just purchased like five years ago. It was purchased as a Band-Aid to fix. Because the truck they had, I, it was before I was elected, before I was involved, so I'm going on what people have told me, but the truck they had at the time, the pumper truck. It was done, it was, it was twenty-five years old, thirty years old, something like that, so they replaced it. They purchased a truck that was already sixteen years old, I think. Uh, they got it for obviously a lot cheaper than a new truck, um, and the idea was it was supposed to last them ten years. Uh, it's almost five years into having that truck, and it is a, um, it's a money pit. They're constantly throwing thousands upon thousands of dollars into this, this truck, so in realistic terms, they need a new truck. Trucks go for about a thousand, or excuse me, trucks go for about a million dollars. Uh, so on top of all the other budget issues, they need a million dollars for a truck. Um, there are avenues to help with funding grants, things like that, so that hasn't really been pursued yet. I just wanted to throw this out there because that is, the next step down the road is trying to figure out that problem as well, so.
Rest, rest assured that nobody on this board is gonna let the fire company go down the drain. We're gonna do everything within our power to get them up to speed, we have different ideas about how to approach that. And we're gonna have to gather assistance from the other municipalities that are also being served. It can't just be Half Moon Township doing the heavy lifting, I mean, every, every town, as Ron said, everybody has a home. Needs to have fire protection, and, you know, Bob has an idea. You know, it, it would be convenient to take the ARPA money and give it to them, and, and I don't have a problem with some of that, but some of it I do. And some of it is, when you give people money, they haven't earned it, and so sometimes easy come, easy go. And I'm not saying that's necessarily the case, but I wanna make sure that whatever we do is as permanent a solution, a permanent a fix. As we can possibly get, and everybody's rolling in the same direction to help the fire company. And that the other municipalities are, are on board with us too, because it isn't just Half Moon Township, it's Worth, it's Port Matilda Borough, it's Houston, it's Taylor. So everybody has to be in on the, in the game to, to, to keep them and, and make them successful over there. And that includes getting community support, and I know Warriors Mark has tremendous community support. That's one thing that fire company has no shortage of is community support. Port Matilda, we have a lot of people in Half Moon Township don't even know who our fire company is. You know, they think it's Alpha or whatever, and, and it's okay, you know, you can donate money to Alpha, I'm sure they'll take the money too, but know where your. You know, your, your bread and butter's here with Port Matilda Fire Company and Warriors Mark Fire Company, so if anybody can write out a big check, that'd be great, and go ahead, please.
Since I come from a family of volunteer firemen, my father was a volunteer fireman, my uncle and my husband are still volunteer firemen. And we're, I'm from Southern Maryland, but there, it's like a big community family event. And we did many fundraisers, at least three or four for the year, and we never, I mean, we weren't in abundance of support, but we. Those fire departments were up and running, they had new trucks, and so why don't we have more support for fundraising? Or like, what's falling apart? Has it always been like this? To me, it's almost like we.
Well, I know you're not a long time resident.
No.
But, and I'm not a long, long time resident, not like Mr. Pressler, but at one time, there were people on that side of the mountain and people on this side of the mountain. And let's just say, we didn't always see eye to eye or get along, and when I was the manager here many moons ago. I was talking to somebody from Port Matilda Borough, and I said, why is there this hostility? And I didn't really understand it at the time, but Port Matilda Borough was paying one hundred percent of the workman's comp on all the firemen. And of course, the other municipalities out and around, they were just kinda cruising along giving, you know, pennies to the fire company. That worker's comp was a terrible burden on the borough over there, I mean, it, when you, when you have a fire company in your municipality, you have to pay the worker's comp on the firemen. And anybody that has their own business and pays worker's comp knows how expensive that is. And you can imagine what it's like if you're gonna pay worker, worker's comp on somebody that's handling dangerous situations every time the trucks roll. So, you know, it, it sort of brought an understanding to me about why some of these hostilities exist. And then the next part is, everybody thinks Port Matilda's a million miles away, but it's not. It's, you know, it's over the hill, it's a couple hundred feet lower in the valley, but it's really not, as, as the crow flies.
Something from the post office.
Yep.
You know where it is.
It's not, it's not that far, but it's perception that it's a long ways. So we need to get our citizens up to knowing and, and thinking about their fire protection and backing these guys over here and helping out as much as possible. I, I, you know, I saw the fundraisers that we had done, I personally sat in here and stamped like four thousand envelopes one night for a fundraiser for the fire company. Not, not for pay, as a volunteer, years ago, and it brought in, in quite a bit of money, I mean, I'm willing to do it, Ron's willing to do it. I don't, I think anybody on this board is probably willing to assist with that, at no cost to the public.
What about like an event, like we, they used to do like pancake breakfasts and some other things that bring community together in support of the fire department? Not, and it also brings in volunteers, like that's where you get little boys come, and you have the fire trucks set up, and you bring, you create the, the desire to be a father.
Well, we, we do actually have a, a group, um, Tyson, what's, what do we call ourselves again? Yes, thank you, um, I remember we changed it, and I can never. A, a, a group of about fifteen, um, Half Moon Township citizens, who, yeah, she's one of them, that we kind of bounce ideas off each other on how to, um, get. Fire department funded for one, we've been coming up with some, um, good ideas, Pancake Breakfast was one of them. Yeah, and we've been in contact with, uh, the guys at the Port Matilda Fire Department as to what we need to do to become fundraisers, you know, the. The title, um, you have to be a, uh, member of the Port Matilda Fire Department, excuse me, I keep saying department, it's Port, Port Matilda Fire Company. You have to be a member, there's a, a process to go through, Ron, you said you already filled out the, uh, membership form, I haven't yet, I haven't gotten around to it. But I know a large portion of that group has, and they've been trying to organize some things, so. There are some efforts in place, it's just, again, my, my worry is, you get efforts like that now, but then as people move in and move out of the township. Sometimes that kind of support can tend to, to wane a little bit, so, um, but yeah, things are kind of progressing that way as well.
All right, well, I know we're not gonna solve it tonight.
No.
It's, the issue's gonna come up again, and I would like to have, uh, Mr. Woodright come up.
Yes, I will make sure he attends the next one.
Question and answers when we have the actual man here that we can ask questions of, yes, please.
I know it's a lot going to ask, but is it possible when he can produce some kind of statistics, how often they come to?
Yes, actually, we have a lot of that already made, I'll, I'll have him forward it to me and I'll get it out to you folks, um, just so you can see it again. So, but yeah, it's available, uh, you're talking like call statistics and how many times they need to come over the mountain, what happened, that kind of thing.
Because what I'm thinking, since two thousand and five, we are into this cycle, right? So maybe we need to mobilize our citizens to really get involved in a network, big fundraising.
I, I want, also, just, it just popped into my head, the, the one development, big development we've had. That is a source of a lot of their work is, uh, since two thousand and five is the highway being opened all the way down to Altoona. Uh, they do a lot of, uh, that curve that everyone knows of, that in the wintertime is so treacherous. Um, that's their coverage area, so they do a lot of extractions from, uh, vehicles and things that lose it and end up down the side of the hill, so.
All right, we, we wanna, oh, yeah, wait.
How much are they in debt right now?
I cannot answer that. The fire department is not in debt, I don't believe, for anything. We have debt involving the fire department that we contribute to, we're under contractual obligation. For that fire truck that is currently dying, because we were one of the municipalities that thought it was a good idea to buy a sixteen-year-old fire truck. And we are on the hook for whatever the, the payment is, I think it's two more years, I don't know, Brett, you might know better than I would.
It would be about six more years.
Yeah, okay, yeah, unfortunately, and I, I mean, I, the, the idea would, you know, in theory would be that we would roll that loan into whatever new loan or. However, that would work, again, that's another, whole other conversation that's down the road, we have to fix their operating budget, their, um, capital budget first. And then, you know, it's like one leads to the other, leads to the other.
Does the budget include a line item for updating the trucks?
Yes.
Are they?
The new budget, yes, the, the capital budget that, so it, it's. The idea is there, there's, in that budget, there's some left over every year, and they'd be putting money away toward the purchase of a new truck every. I think it goes out twenty-five years, so at the end of that twenty-five year window, you're supposed to have enough money saved to buy a truck. Now, obviously, things don't always work out that way, and prices change, but that's in theory the way it's supposed to work, so.
Ron, you were gonna say something?
If you have a funding source and you have a budget, you, you borrow the money to buy the truck and you pay it off over time. I mean, like, we're doing, you know, that, that truck that's sitting there, it's four years ago, that, that was purchased?
Yeah, something like a four, four and a half.
It was a hundred and sixty thousand or a hundred and fifty some thousand, and the balance is still a hundred and five thousand.
Hmm, that's about right, cause you pay the interest before you start paying the principal.
We're gonna put a lot of work into it.
Yeah, exactly, again, I just wanted to bring it up, cause it, it's a conversation that needs to be had. And e- everyone in attendance and anyone watching and, you know, really needs to understand what's going on here, nobody's trying to pull fast when nobody wants to raise. Nobody's trying to pull fast when nobody wants to raise taxes, but...
And if somebody wants to write a really big check to the Port Matilda Fire Company with strings attached for a new truck.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
That, that would be great. So, all right, move on to the next item on the agenda here.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry if we could do things a little out of order. Heisen Kim joined us a little late. Can she present for the AAIP really quick?
I'm okay.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it. She came this far. We actually already voted to approve May as AAIP Appreciation, or Appreciation, I'm sorry. I said that wrong.
AAPI Heritage Month.
Heritage Month. It was part of our consent agenda, but please come and give your presentation. I know you had one, so I didn't want you to have all that work done and...
If it's presented, I was gonna read the resolution proposal because the wording was very important. We recognize that our region is a vibrant, diverse community that welcomes 10,000 AAPI origin and immigrants and Americans. And actually, I'm gonna show you a cover from the State College, and I'm very proud to show our Panathinaikou group what we did since last April, because there was a shooting in Atlanta, and some of us were very surprised, but then we decided to bring joy and perseverance instead of despair and sadness. So we organized a, sharing our immigration experience, how, what it means to be living in Central County, and so we did that. And then a lion badge, we see like sharing resources for the Penn State and neighboring communities. And then we organized lion badge, so basically representing, so there are posters from the New York artists sharing many different diverse faces of Asian faces. And then for that particular lion badge, actually, I proposed we come up with a brochure, postcard, asking people how to report hate crimes. And so finally, we fine tuned, and this is the, the updated version. And I ordered the Korean translation, but many of us, we actually reached out to our friends, and there's Russian, I have a friend, your name is Spanish, and it's all included. And so there's resources on there. And then finally, if you see this is small, my sister, you know, she's an artist, and so I'm terrible at drawing, but I do support art. And so we actually, one of our members reached out to the Belfont Art Museum, which is amazing resources, and they raised such a money for these center gifts this time around. And so if you can host AAPI themed artwork or ceramics, anything, it worked about a year to put together a collection. Some of the artists, they are Penn State graduates, some of them are local friends. And so we include, invite about 17 artists, and they are Iranians, Japanese, Taiwanese, Koreans. And if you can visit Belfont Art Museum, and the exhibition title is Into the Lights. So light is very important, and when we actually chose our logo, it has a light gold sheen in it, which means in Asian culture, light means purity, the perseverance, and, and, and another thing is, so this is AAPI Heritage Month. So what I actually do is, my kids actually literally grow up in school or library, so I actually approach them, can we do something? Especially with the Asian theme. So I am, my neighbor is actually Japanese, so Yushiko and I, we are yeah, making a origami flower, which is the morning glory and iris. This is happening this Sunday, and also organizing another children's story, which includes, if you see like, I don't wanna say this, Asians are known as as Slant Eyes. Now, this time, it's not Slant Eyes, but the eyes, the kids in the corners. So I actually invited my friend, who happens to be Korean adopted, and she's going to read a story with her 10-year-old daughter on her birthday. It's very special. And then this is the, you can kind of see rainbow colors. So this is a very traditional Korean color scheme, and this is actually children's blanket. So I'm gonna read the story. And another one is the, we are celebrating the Indian history, not in the southern part, but northern part. So we inviting three AAPIs to read a story on different books. And by the way, all these books, you can be found in school. So we are reading and we are actually doing a activities. And so I really appreciate recognizing the contributions and us the visible in this community. Thank you so much.
Thanks, and just to clarify, that was the Belfont Library, right?
No, it's a Belfont Art Museum.
Or Belfont Art Museum, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, let's see here, Solar Power Purchase Agreement Presentation by Joe Viglian. That must be you.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff.
Wherever you're comfortable.
Probably sit there would be best. There's the microphone.
I'm sorry. Next time, we gotta... We're over by the microphone, I'm not sure how well you got picked up over there.
I'm sorry, I'm coming incognito tonight with the glasses on, the oak popped and, well, I haven't been sleeping very much. Nah, I decided to take it off. Up on the screen, there is going to be a presentation. I'm gonna read from my computer right here on here. Bob had asked for somebody from the project management team, the Solar Power Purchase Agreement Working Group to come and present tonight. Bob has been on the committee since its inception, and on the front page here, you can see the 15 entities that are in the working group at this point in time. So this working group, its birth was in 2018. And discussions began as to whether we could form a working group and try to implement a solar power purchase agreement, similar to what Penn State did, when they, they put in solar farms in about 100 acres down in South Central Pennsylvania. I think it was Franklin County was where the most of it was. So we worked through 2019, formed, formed the group and developed a cost-sharing agreement for energy services consultants. This was to basically retain a consultant to start getting us ready for the RFP. And we broke that out based upon the study costs, based upon the 2018 usage of electricity across the consortium. The consortium uses about 32 megawatts combined. Half Moon uses about 0.7 megawatts. So your share of the cost is $150 for, for that agreement.
Just for perspective, what was the total cost of that?
It was about a $70,000 consultant fee.
$150, about 70,000.
And then during 2020, we, we'd be a lot further along in this process, but there's a little thing called COVID that sort of showed up, and that put us onto a hiatus for about 18 months. You know, the school district as our lead organization, keeping the schools open and dealing with all the regulations that came out of that, really took up a lot of time. In the meantime, we participated in the World Resources Institute and the Rocky Mountains Institute's large-scale aggregation cohort, which was really pretty interesting. We were actually, actually asked to present our working group formation and our cautionary agreement as a model. There were two entities that were picked. We were one of them to present, the other one was Melbourne, Australia. So it was very interesting to have that being done and being recognized for that. In 2021, we re, we issued an RFP for an energy services consultant, and we procured services from Green Sky. And they are the same consultant that Penn State used for their solar PPA agreement. So what is the objective? What are we trying to do? We're trying to prepare an RFP to obtain the lowest cost of alternative source electricity for the entire group with the option to purchase recs to gain carbon reduction goals at the organization level. Lot of words there. Basically, what that means was Penn State and their SPPA listed a savings when they trended it out over 20 years for their array of about 14 and a half million dollars. We're wondering if it's possible to mirror what they did while still getting electricity and meeting the environmental goals around the area. That's the objective of what we're doing right now. So what is the agenda for tonight? It is to determine the range of electricity for the SPPA. Obviously, when we put a RFP out to, to bid, we have 32 megawatts in the group. Well, if we tell them we want somewhere between 0 and 32 megawatts of service solar array, that's just too big of a range. So we need to sort of narrow that down. And that's where we're going to all 15 entities and asking for what their portions are. We're gonna discuss rec credits at a later time. That's a way to possibly, possibly repurchase back to make the energy environmentally sustainable, which are some goals from the, some of the other organizations, but not necessarily each, something each organization has to do. And that can be decided at a later point. And then we'll discuss the next steps. So the exact information we're looking for to inform the RFP is, what is the expected minimum percentage of electricity purchased as solar through the SPPA? So we've discussed this at the last Cog General Forum, the school district discussed it, we discussed it at the last SPPA Working Group, at the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee, as well as the Cog Finance and Facilities Committee meetings. Cog had put the expected minimum at 50%, and they're discussing the expected maximum of either 90 or 100%. So the question we're looking for on those two is, what is Half Moon looking for as a minimum in their maximum, noting that within their 70,000 kilowatt hours? We're, we're just trying to ask the same questions to everybody to, so that we can properly inform the RFP. And then do we have your expected amount of solar electricity from the PPA? At this point in time, Cog answered that question very succinctly, we do not. And I would not be surprised if that's not the exact same answer that Half Moon Township would come up with. Do we expect to purchase or retain renewable energy credits? Again, this is, you know, for each individual entity, and this is not an answer we need at this time. And then if you have any other questions going forward. So the key points are, the expected solar price is going to be the current, versus, is the current market price for the solar. That's what the RFP is. The objective of it is to obtain the lowest cost. The rec credits will be a later decision point. Term options, depending on the size of the array and the life of the array, we're gonna be asking from anywhere from a five to a 25-year life of the agreement to see what the price has come back at. You know, if one of the useful life of a solar panel is 20 years, they know they have a customer for the entire life of it, they may be willing to give us a pretty darn good deal on it. We want to investigate that. And this will have to align with our current electricity agreement terms. So the factors in determining the range of electricity for the SPPA, what, does your organization have a renewable energy target? Is the price that will be informed by the RFP, is, is that something that you are able to bring in budgetarily? And of course, we will not know that until after we issue the RFP, which is what these questions are informing. The aspiration, does your organization aspire to meet any, some sustainability objectives? Risk, what is your organization's risk tolerance? You know, usually, you're going into a contract for about three, three years on electricity. Do you have a tolerance to go out for 20 years, cause, because one person could argue that that's too long to go out? Another person could argue, well, at least we know we have a stable rate that is beneath what we're paying right now. And growth, does your organization expect to increase or decrease its electricity needs in the next 20 years due to new buildings, energy-efficient projects, and/or electric vehicles? One of the conversations we're having at Cog is, with a berth of Facilities Committee, a long-range facilities master plan, does that mean consolidating locations or other different items on there? So we may not need 100% of the electricity in 2018. It's obviously cheaper to never need to procure the electricity than whatever rate you can get on the open market. If you're not buying the electricity, it's the cheapest way to go forward. And then our, our next steps, we are asking for feedback from the Half Moon Board Supervisors on those four questions, which I will bring back up. I believe it will be slide, slide five. And then the Half Moon Rep, which is Bob, will submit the survey responses. Then the organizations as a group will provide answers and draft, the, in, in the draft RFP will be reviewed. And then hopefully in June, we will approve and release the RFP for the approval, potential approval and wording of the contract in the fourth quarter of 2022. Now, one thing I want to be very clear of is, right now, with these questions that we are asking on slide five to inform the RFP, let's say Half Moon Township would say, we're willing to put in 50 to 90% of our electricity in that range. And then the prices come back in, and the prices come in at 12 cents a kilowatt hour, and you're paying 6 cents a kilowatt hour. You are not on the hook. You can still say zero. But what we're doing is we're informing the range to try to narrow that focus for the RFP going out. And we're doing this for all 15 organizations. We're not just doing this for, you know, the school district or just for the Cog. We're doing it for each individual organization, each individual board, to be able to pull that information back into the RFP. And A, educate the elected officials, and B, to get a response from them for anything they may have concerns on. So at this point, I will turn it back over.
Joe, do you have the slide that shows the organizations that are part of the Solar Power Purchase Agreement?
That was on the front page. That was, that was slide one of this.
Does it have everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and the, the school district is the largest.
Yes.
And yes, they're over 40% of the total usage. There are five entities that make up over 80%, 82% exactly, to be exact. The Center Area Transportation Authority, the State College Borough Water Authority, the State College Area School District, Center County Government, and State College Borough. Those five entities make up 82% of the electricity that is consumed in the, out of these working group, members of the working group.
And I believe that us, the Half Moon Township offices, I think, we're the smallest.
You are the smallest, correct.
I think I'd like to summarize it in a nutshell. What we're trying to do is ride the coattails of much larger organizations into a discounted rate for electricity that is generated via solar generation. And the length of contract that we could get is, like you said, negotiable. There's a lot of moving, moving parts to this. No decisions that would be made tonight are necessarily binding, because this is just an informational part. We haven't agreed, even though we've paid our $150 for the RFP, that does not bind us to signing any contracts with this. We, at the, at the 11th hour, we could very well see it and say, nah, we're out. It's, it's that kind of thing we're looking at, because of the fact that we could very well ride the coattails of much larger organizations to a, a much better price.
And one thing we need to mention is the economy of scale as well. You know, if you go out at a five-megawatt array, it's not going to be big enough. But if, when you get to 15 to 20, you know, for the megawatt arrays, those become big enough for the economy of scales, according to the consultant. And that's the reason for, you know, the request of a 50% minimum, up to 100% to be able to get to that point. And just to go back to the questions on slide five, I pulled up the presentation that was given to finance this morning. And the answers to number three were, does, for, does Cog know its expected amount of solar electricity from the PPA? No, we don't. Do we expect to purchase or retain renewable energy credits? We don't know at this time. We're gonna look to see what the market says and see where to go forward. And, you know, we did have, you know, other questions or concerns, you know, and we wanted to say we were interested in an existing installation with availability that came out of Facilities Committee.
So basically, just looking for an answer for the first two.
That's, at this point in time, you can give us whatever you want, but we're looking for an answer for the first two.
I wanna add two things. No, go ahead. Never mind, I lost my train of thought.
Where are these solar panels gonna go?
Yeah, there we go. I'm sorry, that was it. It's not a solar panel array that we're looking to build. It's, we're very likely going to be purchasing it from existing solar arrays.
An existing solar array, somewhere in the PJM grid, so it could be in Center County, or it could be down towards Virginia or North Carolina. But we're looking for an existing array due to a backlog on, in the queue in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Let me ask you a question. How does this impact the fossil fuel-generated power stations that currently provide our power to the communities in sufficient amount year-round without fail? My concern is that the, the move toward, toward solar energy or other alternative energy sources places a financial burden on those other companies. And my concern is that, you know, we need, we need power year-round. We need power no matter what the temperature is, no matter what the weather is. Can't have something happen like happened in Texas, where they, they lost their power. They had a lot of wind turbine-generated power, they lost their power. People, you know, they had all kinds of property loss. I don't know if there were any life loss or anything like that, but it was pretty serious. And my concern is always, how does these alternative methods? And you know, there, there's a, there's a significant amount of financial cost that's often borne through taxation for these programs, for subsidies, to, to make them viable. And everybody pays that. I know, over time, I've lived here 37 and a half years in the township, and I've tried alternate energy sources. And typically, what happens is, I end up back with West Penn Power, because frankly, this, the prices start escalating, and we're, we're off in, you know, twice the amount of cost. That's my big concern.
And, and understandable, it's an excellent question.
We like to have alternatives, you know?
Yeah, yeah, and that's an excellent question, and I actually think I've got two-sided answer for it. The one side is, we're entering into a 20-year contract potentially, a 10, 20-year contract for that. And if we can get it at a rate that's a penny less a kilowatt hour, I really don't care, because I'm saving the taxpayers a boatload of money. On the other side, in terms of reliability, our consultant has recommended something to us called a sleeve purchase arrangement, whereby the 50 to 90% that Cog has said we're going to go in as a minimum and maximum for the solar, that's the solar portion. The remaining portion of that will not be on that, it will actually be on the grid in how we're do, how we're getting the electricity, the exact same way as we're getting it right now. Everything that we are doing right now, these solar panels are pumping the power into the grid, and then we're drawing off the grid the exact same way. And then, the gen, and then the supply cost, the generation cost for what you're doing right there would be agreed to within this contract. And you would know, as you're saying, escalators are different things, that would be spelled out, and the financial metrics would be there over a period of 20 years. So is it financially feasible to do it? For Penn State, they said 14 and a half million dollar savings over a 20-year period. And they are, risk reverses anybody else, this came out through OPP and through the whole, and through the whole Penn State, you know, hierarchy into finance, and they agreed, even risk management, that this was worth doing. So we're trying to mirror what they did, and we have some expertise around to try to do it. But one of the big differences between us and Penn State is Penn State is their own supplier. So we will go through a constellation of Mid-American Energy, who we're going through right now. But there'd be a portion of it would be supplied by solar, that we would be agreed to, and there'd be a portion of it supplied exactly the way that we are getting it right now.
And that type of thing would be open to us as well. I mean, we could, if, if you're worried that, that something, there's going to be some technologically advanced energy generation thing that's coming, going to come in 10 years, and we'd be stuck in, in something that was, because if the prices dip, you still have to pay that contracted price, that's the risk. But when's the last time we all saw energy prices really dip for an extended period of time? It just doesn't really happen. So, yes, there is a level of risk, but I think the reward really outweighs that risk.
We've got to keep in mind what kind of entity Penn State is. Okay, it's heavily government or tax subsidized. All right, I worked there for 27 years, and I work closely with physical plant, so know quite a bit about their infrastructure. And, you know, they've got large dollars to spend. So, you know, they, and when it comes to paybacks, you know, I also know the physical plant typically has about a billion and a half dollars in, in deferred maintenance, too. So I'm not sure about, in terms of their budget management, what, you know, what they're doing there. But when I hear this kind of money being spent, it just, it boggles my mind that, and my main concern goes back to, how much pressure does it put on the generators of electricity that we all rely on for our very lives? So that's my main concern.
And that's understandable, and quite honestly, from the other side of it, I look at what's going on overseas right now, in Russia, Ukraine, and what's happening in Europe, with how are they going to get off of the oil and having a stable infrastructure in terms of generating power or natural gas? Russia's turning off the gas to, you know, a lot of areas, or they're not taking gas anymore from Russia, trying to turn it off in the Western world. This is another way to hedge your risk in that capacity, too. You can look at this a lot of different ways.
Yeah, but that discounts our ability to generate energy, too. I mean, we're, we were the, until a year ago, we were the world's largest producer of energy. We were exporting energy. And so, you know, the infrastructure of the United States is not something to be scoffed at.
And I'm looking for, but for a $150 investment for Half Moon Township, you know, I looked at this from the Cog, it's about a $4,000 investment to find out.
For feedback.
And I'm looking to find out, I'm looking to find out from the RFP and see what it tells us.
Yeah, and we're not obligated to anything yet, so let's just throw some percentages up there, one and two.
Do we need to do this tonight? Are you looking for this tonight?
We're looking for it prior to our meeting on May 25th, I believe.
Yes, and I don't, since it's non-binding, I don't think we really need to vote on anything. We just need to establish numbers and turn them over.
And the standard has been, what, 50 to 90?
The request is to set a minimum of 50%, just because that sort of gets us to the 15-megawatt amount. And we're trying to do this, and I'll tell you what, this group of people that I've-
That's why I'm asking.
Okay, there was a presentation at the General Forum on all this stuff at the last meeting. There was a presentation at the Solar Power Purchase Agreement Working Group and at the school district. And then, we had three Cog committees leading up to this. We did try to get this out pretty widely distributed. And I apologize if this is the first time you're seeing this.
It's about the fourth time I've seen it, so.
It's good.
Well, I would propose that we do, we follow the lead of the Cog. What did you say, they did a 50 to 90%?
50 to 90%.
I mean, that seems reasonable. I mean, if you, if you get a really nice number of, you know, price per kilowatt hour, I mean, you kind of want to dive into it. There is the, again, that slight risk factor that somehow energy could bottom out and we'd be stuck paying. But I, I'm not a fortune teller, but I'm going to say that's a pretty safe bet that that's not going to happen.
Is this energy for the municipal government? Or is it, or is it energy for the entire township?
Municipal government.
It would be the municipal government, our, our buildings, basically.
So even when you're saying 50 to 90%, we took 2019 numbers. I don't know as if you paid gas, or, or not gas, electricity up at the building at Brother's Pizza that you're doing there. If you're planning to consolidate back into this location, and maybe your fuel bills might be different, your electricity bills are different, maybe you want to go for a slightly smaller number because of, you know, the economies of scale and not having to heat two separate locations versus one. These are questions to take into account. But again, please remember, this is not binding. If it comes in at 15 cents a kilowatt hour, you can say, nope, we're not in it, we're not in it. But if it comes back at 3 cents a kilowatt hour, which I don't think it will, at all. But you could say, we want to put almost all of it in there, because that's going to reduce, that's going to cut our electricity bills in half. And that's sort of-
The numbers you're throwing around on the kilowatt hour price, is that generation money, cost? Or is that, you know, obviously it has to be delivered?
That's just generation cost.
Just generation. So I think I'm paying about 7 cents a kilowatt hour generation right now. And if we're going to 12 cents a kilowatt hour, then that's a, you know, a net cost.
And you could say zero at that point? So you're not binding anything tonight?
I, I don't have a problem with, you know, I know what you're trying to do. You're trying to make a bulk purchase to get the best deal for everybody, and I, I don't disagree with that concept at all. I'm just looking at, I, I know that the solar power company probably gets a big government subsidy to help offset the cost of the solar panels. I know solar panels have a limited life. I mean, I'm probably the only person in this room that had a physics class on solar panels. So, the techno, well, okay, maybe two of us. But the, the technology years ago was much less efficient than it is today, and I think it's going to get a lot better in the future. But at what, at some point, I think you're probably going to get close to a break even. But I, I don't honestly believe right now that we're going to get close to the actual generation cost unless somebody's pumping money in from somewhere else to make the numbers look better, you know?
We're, we're going for likely a, so, not a new build, likely an existing build. So whatever is in there is already in there. That's number one. And number two, you hit the nail on the head. We're trying to find out. Why are we making, for, you're already on the hook for $150 to find out. So let's find out.
Yeah.
Lee, did you have a question yet?
The state grains and the national grains has been handling this solar thing for quite a while, and we're getting a lot of information from that. The advice that they're giving us is, they're referring to this 800 and some acre farm, if you want to call it, in Lancaster County. And their advice is, it should not be put on farmland, because you lose the farmland. Yes, you can do so much under, they want to go on reclaim mine land where it's not being used for anything else. And their final advice is, before you sign any agreement, get a lawyer.
And we have a consultant, and we will be getting a lawyer. I mean, there is no doubt, and there will be some, a lawyer who is, who is knowledgeable in this. It won't just be a local solar.
I'm aware of a solar, potential 1,400-acre solar farm in Center County that I can't divulge where, but I, I'm aware of it. And I'm just wondering how the public's going to react when they see that, number one. But I don't have a problem with going along with the concept, what you're talking about. If, if our hands are, as long as our hands are not tied, if that's what it takes to see the, the numbers, because it's always good to see the numbers. But when it comes time to see the numbers, I want to see all the numbers. And I'm not saying you're hiding anything, but, you know, if the federal government's pumping $100 billion into it in the backside to offset the, you know, supplement the cost, then it's not really, we're not getting it for 12 cents a kilowatt hour. We're actually getting it for, say, 24 cents a kilowatt hour. Just know what I know about solar panels. I know they're not cheap.
And I will be honest with you, I do not believe that the person who would be selling us the electricity at that point, in responding to the proposals, unless that's an, an absolute request from Half Moon Township to include in the RFP, I don't think that something would be divulged. Just, I mean, I would not be expecting to see on a response to our RFP, how much can you sell us electricity for, and what does yours, the, the long-term agreement look for, look like in terms of costs, to include all of their back financial funding, whether, where their dollars came from? I'm just being honest on that point.
Sure, we can look it up if we know who's doing the contract.
Sure, but I think I'd like to add, just for information sake, that the fossil fuel industry has been government subsidized, subsidized for better part of the last century. So, I mean, all energy sources are subsidized by our United States government to varying levels. So, but anyway, yeah, but get back to the point, where if we want to just throw out numbers so they can do the research and get back to us on what the cost benefit was, or, or what the, the price per kilowatt hour is, you know, and then we can go from there. But the fact is, we got to get the information.
Without taking a vote, is everybody okay with at least riding it to see what the numbers are?
I'm not.
You're not?
But we've already paid for this.
It doesn't hurt.
I'm not.
We're not losing anything.
Yeah, I'm not for it.
We could win, we could end up paying less. You know, not before saving money and for, and for getting something more environmentally.
I'm not for pursuing it. I didn't say it was for saving money.
And for being more environmentally conscious.
Chuck, you haven't said anything down there too much. You're taking it all in.
I'm saying, let's move along here. I'm tired, and we got things to do. But I'm not in favor of solar, that's just me. I, I don't think it's a thing that's going to sustain the world. So that's my opinion, I'm done.
Looks like we might need a vote then, Mr. Chair.
I move that we set our potential non-binding energy levels for the solar power purchase agreement to be reported as a minimum of 50% and a maximum of 90%.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and second, any discussion?
A question. Did I get a question?
Go ahead.
Has solar, have you looked at an alternative to doing just our own, you're just talking about this building?
No, 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 no. It's, we're not proposing at all that new solar panels be built anywhere. This is just purchasing-
But my question is, and, and, and why aren't we just doing our own?
Oh, the, the, I, I get you now, you're talking, it would be, it would be this building, it would be the, what is the maintenance building? We don't have anything else.
We're, we're just buying power out of the grid.
Yeah.
You'll, you'll never notice a difference. Except it's coming from-
No, I know that, I had solar.
And the investment to put our own panels on the roof, it would be a large initial investment. And it's just easier to go this route, and because you'll get a low price and, and without that initial 20, $30,000 to put the panels up.
And with the size of it, the economies of scale, you're getting 32, you, 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 Half Moon Township at 70,000 kilowatt hours is buying into a 32 million kilowatt consortium that perhaps working together can allow us to get the economies of scale like a Penn State did and get perhaps prices where they could save the money that they said that they saved.
General rule of thumb is, the more you purchase at once, the better the price is, so.
Yes, sir. Or didn't you?
I just, I equate this conversation to what Pennsylvania government just did with Ricky in making an energy consortium and being part of that. I'm not a, I'm not opposed to being green, but is this concept that's coming out of Cog in the Center Region and ultimately Penn State University is looking to this Half Moon Township to say, you're ponying up for your share, Half Moon Township, at 50% minimum. So you're making a commitment down the road to buy this energy, and they're negotiating on that behalf. At such a trivial amount of money that your energy cost is now, how much savings can there be?
I anticipated the savings for the $150 investment to be paid back in about six months. That's the investment for the RFP.
You get a West Penn Power bill here, is that where you're paying your energy to?
Yes.
You could call West Penn Power and say, I want to buy solar energy from you, and get the, get a similar situation going. Why the large, huge consortium?
Because it's, it's working, because Penn State did it, SEPTA did it, City of Philadelphia did it. We're trying to mirror projects that are going on similarly around the state and that we're seeing even around the world, they're building these other consortiums like this. The, the interesting thing about this group is not actually the project. The project, we're not on the cutting edge. Where we're on the cutting edge is, we have 15 entities willing to pull together to basically say, as 15 entities, we're willing to buy 15 megawatts. And that we can agree to do it, and then Half Moon enters into their own agreement. If Half Moon decides not to play, and they say, then we have 14 entities, and we buy 14.99 megawatts. I'm, I'm just saying along that lines at the end of the day. But that, this, the interesting part of this is not, or the cutting edge part of this is not the actual project. The project has shown to be viable, whether it was Penn State, whether it was City of Philadelphia, whether it was SEPTA, and there's a, you can look at it across the board. You just mentioned the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The concept that is interesting on this and is new is that we have 15 group, different entities. And I will tell you, this has been my favorite group in my 12 years of Cog to work with. They've just been great people to work with, and we're trying to do it together. That's the big difference.
I suppose that-
You can think of a better price, right?
Yeah, 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 again, it's, the more you purchase at once, the better price you get for everyone involved. So we're, again, riding the coattails to a really good price for green energy.
I would contend that if we went to Penilec or whomever, instead we're going to do the same thing, we'd even get a better price than we're getting from the solar energy people. Because of the volume of electricity that we buy, you know, if you put all these agencies together.
I, I understand that, it's where you put $150 into the total to find out the answer. But, well, I'm going to be at the township meeting when you come along and say, I'm guaranteeing you, Penn State, I'm in for 50% of this. I don't think, I don't think that's a good commitment for 20 years on your energy cost.
But we're not anywhere near that.
Yeah, again, the, the-
But it starts as a snowball, and it gets bigger and grows.
We need to find the numbers to see if we want to make the commitment. If we don't have any numbers, how can we make a logical decision?
Well, you already got 150, you already made that decision. You put the 150 into the tail, whatever percentage you want to claim, that's your option. I'm not saying, you know, if you're bored, I'm just a resident.
But it's, it's not binding.
But we're not Penn State, this is Half Moon Township with 3,000 houses and a budget of whatever. I mean, we're a rural community here, we're not Penn State and State College.
And this is why we're trying to get a better price, so we can save the taxpayers some money.
Yeah, I want to say something.
Go ahead.
So, the committee, we are getting the energy source, where they are located, obviously they're getting more sun than us in Half Moon.
Well, I don't, I, we don't know where they're going. We're going to find out the location of where it is when we send out the RFP. But it's going to probably be somewhere in the PJM grid, which would be basically North Carolina to the top of Pennsylvania, and I believe New Jersey heading west.
Like part of Ohio or something.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I want to share my personal experience with my brother living in Bristol. So we were there, and we were using his solar powers. The shower stopped in the middle. So by being in agree, that we are guaranteed that we have a continued supply of energy, so.
Yes. As long as the sun shines. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Let's call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
No. No. We're gonna, we're gonna pass on this one, but thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks for coming, Joe. I'll be in touch.
Administrative office renovation relocation project update by Ron Servello.
Well, uh, everything's on order that needs to be on order at this point. Permit in hand, the ones posted at the building. The data installation, data wires, CAT six wires will be installed in two weeks. Probably also have the wireless access points installed, one in this room, one in the office. That will not only provide wireless access, but it should, according to the technician that was here yesterday to meet with me, to pick the locations for the the data lines, the, it should improve the traffic flow through the network. One of the, one, we currently access wireless in the back, from the back room there. Okay, and that can be problematic at times. So we'll have one here in the middle of the, in the ceiling, one in the office space in the ceiling. There will be data lines for CNET, there'll be one back here, one up here. Part of this also will be to clean up the wiring for the, the, the monitor. They're gonna install an outlet behind the monitor there, so that'll clean up the wiring there. But it looks like there's some lead times on all the furnishings, so it's probably, we're looking at July into August before everything's done. It's all the furniture and everything's installed, and it looks like a move would happen sometime in August, don't know, don't have the date yet, but things are moving along, so. I have to see that, what these, what the delivery schedules for the furnishings are, that kind of leads everything else. And then we will make moves of the, the, the staff, their contents, their files, information, everything. It does give us time, and I think Zach was going to look at the, the rental agreement at the pizza shop to see, and we haven't heard back from him, right?
No.
To see what our options are there, I'm not anticipating that we're gonna be able to move out, but that also.
We can move out, but we just can't get a contract.
Yeah, we can move out, but we'll still be paying the rent, which, if you think about it, that gives us time, the staff can work with the, you know, volunteers, me and others to help move things over, over a period of time, and it could, it would reduce the the moving costs. So that is the, now, the portion of, the proposal, the original proposal for the project had a data wiring quote from Expert Communications of approximately forty-five hundred dollars. Can't find it right off the bat. But about fifteen hundred of that is to equip this room, has nothing to do with the office, so I just wanted to point that out. So we're getting, we're getting the whole building uh, uh, covered with that, that one job, both the office space as well as the meeting space here. So we'll have better technology in this room as well as in the office with that data installation, forty-five hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty cents. That's my update.
Alrighty. Next on the list, in-house road and drainage issues, Chuck's back.
Uh, I think we're looking at possibly putting that pipe in on Orchard Road before it's paved, I think we need to take a look at, do we need one in that location or something? Probably the other projects uh, that need addressed is a couple places on Smith Road where the ditches keep washing out in heavy storms. Maybe put some bigger rock in them to try to hold them, and there's a couple other small drain pipes and whatnot around different roads, a couple down Louisville where the water's not getting into the pipe and going away, so. Just a lot of little things that need addressed, keep picking out in the summer and try to get some of them dressed. Pretty much all I got.
Okay, thank you. Let me see, status of public works personnel by all supervisors. We had a executive session Monday and Tuesday night to interview potential employees, we had some good candidates come in. Gonna have a little bit of a brief executive session after this meeting tonight, just because we can't, obviously, if we're not hiring somebody, we don't want to embarrass them. Have their employer think they're leaving, um, just to discuss potential, uh, maybe call them back in for a second interview, just to make sure they're, who we're looking for. Anybody else have anything to add on that? Okay. Action items, banking resolutions, this is for the signatures for First National Bank, M and T Bank, and Pliget Authorized signers. Gonna go back to two supervisors and treasurer signing the checks. Where we have lots of signatures and people can be held responsible if they don't do what they need to do, so. Uh, for the first resolution, be for the First National Bank authorization signature, do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
Dave, can you repeat what's changing?
Uh, at some point, we went to one signature, right, you want to do the rundown on that?
Yeah, um, historically, Half Moon has always run two supervisors and the treasurer or the manager, whomever. Um, and then, when the last change happened, it went from one supervisor to the manager or the treasurer. We're just reverting back with the current staffing situation to two supervisors and the treasurer before a check can go out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so we have three, three resolutions, the first one, which would be twenty twenty-two dash fifteen to change the signature authorization on the First National Bank account authorized signers, do I hear a motion to approve that resolution?
I'm a.
Ron made a motion to approve, do I hear a second? Okay, Chuck seconded, any discussion? If a motion is second, all those in favor approving resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifteen signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifteen is approved. Motion to approve the M and T Bank authorized signers, which is twenty twenty-two dash sixteen, do I hear a motion?
I'll motion, I'll move to approve it.
Ron made a motion, do I hear a second?
That's the same, we're doing the same thing.
That. Yeah, we're changing all three accounts, uh, First National Bank, M and T, and Pliget, but they all want their own resolution, so.
Right, but it'd be two supervisors.
Two supervisors and and the treasurer, yeah.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, resolution twenty twenty-two sixteen approved. Final is resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventeen, which is a Pliget account authorized signers, do I hear a motion to approve the the resolution?
Don't move.
All right, you made the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Ron seconds. Any discussion? There are nine, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion approved to approve the resolution. Okay, supervisor reports. Sure, go ahead.
So we had a, we heard from Mr. Pizzoli and he just left, right? But um, so then two, three supervisors said no, who's going to follow up on that? How much money will cost for Half Moon to go solo?
I took that vote as signaling that we are stepping out of that um, group. That we will not be pursuing the.
So the rest of the group will carry on?
Yes, they will carry on and we will get our energy from wherever we get our energy from.
Okay, so what will be the ramification then? Are we, are we not building our own, building down the road, and so then we are on our own?
Apparently.
Nothing's changed, your electric bill comes once a month, whether we do anything or not.
But we just waste our time to join very cheaply into a grid.
I pretty much guarantee it won't save anything, but.
I mean, I I really like how you handle the um, the installation.
We've uh.
Yeah, so do you think that you, maybe we could do the same, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm asking.
I'm sorry, what did you ask?
I really like how you approach the installing all the data input and others, so do you possibly maybe, would you mind looking into these solar options? Um, is it possible for you to do other necessary work?
Talking about putting solar panels on the roof of the building?
Right, yes, because we just waste our time to do cheaply, so then maybe you have to prepare for the future, maybe, I I really like how you're very thorough in your job, so maybe would you willing to maybe supervise the back, maybe, are you willing to part of this, another preparation for Half Moon, how to handle?
I'm not a big believer of solar power. So I don't, I don't see pursuing something that I don't think is gonna be a viable thing in the future. I I grant, you know, I may be a bad person and gonna ruin the world because fossil fuel has been giving us power forever.
Um, that's totally fine, but I'm like, would you willing to do the groundwork, because you just said no, so would you follow the provide alternative?
No, I voted not to pursue it.
You're gonna build a new building, is that what I'm hearing, you have a future building in mind?
There's no plans to build a new building. The the, the plan was to get out of the pizza shop over here and get back over here to this office.
And what, so we're talking about, I don't know, we're talking about even.
Well, no, please, if you got a question, I'd rather you asked it.
I think Heisen misspoke when you said build, uh, we were talking about a solar array, not a building.
Yeah, right, so the installing is so that.
But no, we're not.
We're not, we're not doing all of it.
Someday the technology may exist that's really efficient, and it's a great thing, but I don't believe, personally believe from the research that I've done that that technology exists. And and I know they think they're gonna get some great power rate, but we're gonna get to see what the numbers are when they come out. Now, the Center Region will either get a screaming deal or they won't, but.
But we won't, we won't be part of it.
We won't be part of that, that's correct.
Only if there was, they're paying a hundred and fifty dollars to be part of the.
Right, so they just threw that hundred and fifty dollars away.
No, they, we agreed two years ago to hire a consultant to look into it, and for a hundred and fifty dollars, we figured.
But here tonight, it was my understanding, they were just asking for information, we could still, it wasn't any kind of decision other than, let's just get more information.
Well, they're gonna get the information anyways.
The way I saw.
We're not anymore.
Well, to be honest with you, the way I saw it tonight was, we were going to have a work session tonight, and we were going to have, on that, on the work session, under the work session topics, there was the line item solar power purchase agreement presentation, I did not expect to vote tonight on anything. I did not expect to have to have, provide some kind of a commitment, that, I didn't expect that, I didn't know that was gonna happen tonight. So not understanding enough about this whole thing, because, and I have, I have requested information from the person, and Pam Adams, I believe is her name, and I had not had the opportunity yet, that was just yesterday or Tuesday, that I finally got information about the person who's coordinating this. And I was gonna have a discussion with her about it, I haven't had the opportunity to do that yet, it's only Thursday, that was yesterday, I think I got that email. So I was going to have, to get more information, from my own understanding, about what this is about, okay? But without having that information, having the time to study it, I'm not gonna vote positively on something that I don't understand.
But I was under the impression for this whole presentation that it was purely that they're just asking for information, that you didn't have to vote on anything other than to give them some information, that they wanted to present.
Well, they could go get the information then.
But you then put it out as a resolution to vote on it, that we're not a part of it anymore.
I did not put out a resolution.
Isn't that what happened here, that that you voted on it, that no, you're gonna be.
What happened was. The consensus, so we had to see where the consensus was.
Apparently, we, we went to a vote because we couldn't find a consensus, and by not providing the information to the consultant via Mr. Viglione, um, that effectively removes us from the work group and their calculations toward all of this, because we have decided to not go forward. So I guess that's the best way to put it.
When do they really, when have they really taken the?
Next meeting is the twenty-fifth, I believe.
At the exec session?
Uh, something like that, I forget.
So Monday, the twenty-fifth, is when they'll have to come up with the numbers?
I think my question is, what percentage of the total amount of all the power that all those fifteen entities were going to commit to would be the running of this building?
Almost nothing.
That's what I thought, thank you.
If if we were like.
It's not gonna impact them, they're gonna go ahead and have their same numbers regardless, it would have potentially helped us, it's not gonna impact them, they could.
Potentially.
Potentially. But we won't know now.
Well, we'll see what they end up paying. Anyhow, supervisor reports, anybody have anything to add?
Um, yes. The COG building, uh, this is through facilities and finance, and I have a, a document that was just, um, the draft was just reviewed and approved today that I will send out to you folks, that, um, the, the COG building, when it was built twenty-some years ago, there was a lease that will expire in twenty twenty-eight, and in that lease, um, it wasn't clearly identified what happened at the end of the lease. So that, there's been about three or four years of work that have gone in now to coming up with the addendum that needs to go to that lease so that we know what's gonna happen in twenty twenty-eight, because the COG entity owns the land that the building is on, but the municipalities help to finance that building, and COG's been paying that loan back now over all these years, and it's been paid back with interest. So in twenty twenty-eight, the COG building will revert to the COG. So they just need to clearly spell that out in the lease addendum, so that's gonna be discussed at the general forum on the twenty-fifth, and we will need to vote on that. So I will send out the addendum document so that everybody can take a look at that.
Do they want us to vote at the supervisory meeting, or do they want us to vote at the COG?
At the COG meeting.
At the general forum, well, I will be there.
Okay.
Is there, is there any hitches or anything with that that, pretty straightforward then?
Yeah, they've had the attorney's court over it, and they've had the, like I said, it just wasn't clearly defined at that lease.
I knew there was a question of what happens when the lease runs out, so.
That's what they're trying to define, so that we can take care of that now, so in twenty twenty-eight, we're.
What is that, a billion, a twenty year?
I think I saw on, the date was two thousand something?
I remember when it was built, because they got leaves.
I think it was a twenty-five year lease, so if it's gonna go out in twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah, that would be about, right, twenty years old, approximately. Thank you. Anybody else?
I attended the land use and, uh, community infrastructure committee meeting, uh, last week, and, um, the one thing I wanted to bring up was that the Meeks Lane, the U A J A Meeks Lane, um, in, I guess, capacity issue, you know, the pumping station and the sewer line, uh, capacity upgrade issue is going to come up again. It's come, it, there's another, there are some potential amendments to, I think, the statement about the agreement, um, to be presented through general forum, I think, again, it'll eventually come back to the municipalities again. To, to, the question will come back again.
Regarding our area plan.
Yeah, and, and whether or not we would approve or not approve changing the capacity of that system. Like, like, similar to what we did, uh, the last time that came across here, so. I don't know what's gonna happen at this point with, or when that's going to happen, so I haven't seen the agenda. I did not attend the public safety, uh, committee meeting this week, because it, there wasn't really anything on there that I thought would pertain to us. The other thing I wanted to talk about briefly was the, um, tennis court. Stephen Roundtree, resident, uh, approached me, approached us, uh, about needed improvements or needed repairs, I should say, to the tennis court. I met with him last week to see what, what he meant, he had a whole list of items, him and his wife played tennis up there all. Him and his wife played tennis up there all the time. And I guess in, in addition to tennis, there's pickleballs played there as well and in the wintertime, they put up a, they put up a retainer to, to use to convert it to ice skating. So the, the court has taken a, got quite a beating. There's, there's low spots in the blacktop where water lies on the blacktop and it's causing damage. There's some issues with the blacktop, the edges are starting to break off. So there's some repair work and, and Stephen has agreed to, or offered to go and get the information from people, contractors who specialize in restoring those kinds of facilities and provide that information to us. And soon as he does that, we'll, I'll, I'll bring it here. He may actually want to make a presentation here and to see, get an idea of what it would cost to do all this work. And then there's some repairs, the latch for the gate is broken, needs to be replaced. So there's some things that need to be done immediately, not high-cost things. You know, the latch to hold, to hold the gate in place is, is important. And Amy and I-
Think we can take care of that under general maintenance, I guess.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up.
All right.
There's some maintenance issues there.
Anybody else? Or none? We covered diversity, equity and inclusion unless somebody else has something else to add. Anything for the good and welfare? All right, we're going to adjourn to a short executive session to talk about personnel and then we're going to adjourn the meeting here anyway, so. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Thanks for coming in.